Good evening and welcome to the first Lawrence City Council meeting of the year 2016. Once again, I would like to thank all my colleagues for electing me as the new council president for the term 2016-2017. I am proud to be here. Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
At the same token, I'd like to congratulate councillor from District F, Mr. Mark LaPlante, for being elected as vice president of the city council. I am sure that together, we will be able to work closely together to make a lot of positive changes for the city council.
Councillor Reyes?
Present.
Councillor De Peña?
Present.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Present.
Councillor Abdu?
Present.
Councillor Monte?
Present.
Councillor Maldonado?
Present.
Councillor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Present.
Councillor Vice President LaPlante?
Here.
And Councillor President?
Present.
All present in council.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we please take a moment of silence unless elaborate thoughts to the family of our secretary Lillian Mishaw, as well as Carol Moore, who's the assistant city clerk, whose mother passed away? Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
And to the republic whose sustenance and allegiance on God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Two sets. Councillors, we have two set of minutes that date October 20th and November 4th. Can I please get a motion to approve?
So move?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Public participation. Preference will always be given to Lawrence residents in regards to public participation. We'll begin with H. Malley.
Huh?
No, H. George?
Yes.
No. Mr. Malley, who's a Lawrence resident, will go first. From my understanding, you live in the city of Methuen. Thank you. So, once again, preference for public participation will always be given to City of Lawrence residents. I'd like to call H. Malley to the front, to the podium.
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaigns for safe Lawrence only possible due as our elected official and Mayor Rivera support our police department and the senior officer. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizens, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has been great city because of our hard-working DPW workers, FU workers, and the best leadership made our DPW workers example. We the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our DPW workers and their union. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrificed their safety so our citizens be safe. We the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support of our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh is moving forward. Turnaround plan has created more Level 1 school, more higher school graduate, and more hope for our children. Citizen, support our teachers and their union. In the years of the election of the two years that you're gonna serve, we the citizen demand of you, serve our citizen, support our police department and their union, support our firefighters and our DPW workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. The next person in line is Mr. Dick Russell. Good evening.
Good evening, councillors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside at 34 Cross Street in the city. Congratulations on all of yours on becoming members of Lawrence's legislative body. I wish you well in getting along with the city's executive and judicial bodies. Oh, you didn't realize the city had a judicial body. It's called the taxpayers and the citizens. An item from last city council meeting has to be clarified. A member of your body requested to make a point of order. The member didn't appreciate the lack of respect being shown to the council by members of the audiences by texting comments. Well, I plead guilty. I did it with my iPhone, and I'm gonna continue to do it, because I think the public needs to know what's going on. A bit of advice from Harry Truman. You can't stand the heat? Get out of the kitchen. Yes, I did attempt to become a leader of the community by running for a seat on this body, not knowing how badly the deck would be stacked against me. That being said and done, after observing this body's actions for the last six or so years, it's obvious that you should be required to follow some rules from the citizens and taxpayers of the city. I call this the suggested Ten Commandments of City Council, in which council president has copies for all of you. One, thou shalt start on time. Two, thou shall know what's on the agenda. Three, thou shalt listen when someone talks on a subject. Four, thou shalt not ask the same question repeatedly. Five, thou shalt not bring up what happened years ago. Six, thou shall only worry about now and the future. Seven, thou shall not monitor your text messages. Eight, thou shall remember who you work for. Nine, thou shall be considerate of your fellow councillors. Ten, thou shalt not depart before the meeting is over. And again, I include the word suggested in the title. With that, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. George Peter?
Abdud Kalu.
Abdud Kalu.
Thank you.
Okay. That is it for... Moving on, public hearings, we have none. Communications from the mayor, city officials, or city attorney, we have none. Appropriations, orders, and resolutions. Previously, I served as the chair for Budget and Finance, this Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Since I usually give the reports for this, I will ask the person who served as the vice chair to report. That will be councillor Mark LaPlante, and I apologize for...
It was me?
Yes.
I didn't know it was the vice chair.
I know. First document is Document 33215. It's an appropriation transfer. Authorization to exceed expenditure.
The Budget Committee voted by unanimous vote to send to the council a favorable recommendation. Document 33215, appropriation authorization to exceed the snow and sanding in accordance with National Laws Chapter 44, Section 31D. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is Document 33515, appropriation. Mr. Councillor LaPlante.
Sure. The Budget Committee voted by unanimous vote to send to the full council a favorable recommendation. Document 33515, appropriation permission to pay prior invoices from the current appropriation, and this is dealing with the school department for the amount of $5,503.48. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is Document 34215. Councillor LaPlante.
The Budget Committee voted by unanimous vote to send to the full council a favorable recommendation to do appropriation for water and sewer projects. I'm gonna make this just as a committee report for the sensitivities of my current position ethics. So make that in the form of a motion that we accept the committee report.
Second.
Motion to accept as a committee report has been made and properly second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Present.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor De Peña?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Abdu?
Yes.
Councillor Monte?
Yes.
Councillor Maldonado?
Yes.
Councillor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Plant?
Present.
Present. Present.
Yes, the motion carries.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Councillor Maldonado?
I need information on what, what is it gonna be done with 1,600,000?
Sure.
And where's that money gonna come from?
Mr. Arnealo or Mr. Peña, if available?
Evening councillors. This is a request from the Water Sewer Commissioner for funding from, for two different purposes. One is an on-call water and sewer services contract for a million dollars, a transfer from Water Sewer retained earnings to a Water Sewer Services account to handle on-call problems as they appear. The second item that he's requesting is 600,000 for West Street Sewer Main Rehabilitation Project. And again, that's a transfer from retained earnings to West Street Sewer Main Rehabilitation. So it's a total of 1.6 million from retained earnings to his, to those two accounts for those two project purposes.
I'm sorry, can you tell me again where the money is coming from?
From retained earnings in the water sewer account.
From where?
Retained earnings. Free cash basically for the enterprise fund.
Free cash from the water department?
It's equivalent of free cash for an enterprise fund. It's just called retained earnings instead of free cash.
Mr. Arnealo, is there a description, specific description of what is gonna be done?
Yeah, he has a, there's a memo, I believe, that went to the city council. On-call water and sewer services, I'll just read it briefly. This contract will be for on-call contractor services to address large sewer main collapses, water main breaks, drainage and infrastructure concerns, as well as illicit discharges and any isolated issues affecting the proper flow of wastewater in the city systems. Past contracts of this type have been used to correct wastewater restrictions in the following areas: Cedar Street, Hampshire, Myrtle, Parker, Bradford, Florence, Congress, amongst others. This work is imperative in order to comply with an EPA's consent decree requiring city to abate illicit discharges as they occur. The second item is for West Street Sewer Main Rehabilitation. Apparently, the large portions of the sewer main of West Street have been collapsing over recent years, causing sinkholes, sewer backups, and other odor issues. Many local businesses and residents of West Street have reached out to us asking for a solution. We are currently designing a permanent solution and plan on addressing, which they plan on addressing in 2016. Portions of the sewer pipe must be lined to prevent further soil erosion above, while other portions are structurally deficient and must be replaced entirely. So those are the two descriptions that the water commissioner included with his memo to the council.
Councillors, have any further questions?
I don't have any more questions now.
Okay.
I have a comment if I may to you, council president. Thank you.
Councillor Monte.
How has this come about for West Street to be the recipient of this money when we have areas in Prospect Hill that councillor Alvarez and I have been working with, that are basically, they are also collapsing and eroding, but on top of that, because of the new developing that we had, the new developments that we had in Methuen, all of that water has been corralled, I wanna say, or ponded in the Leroy Rollins area, and we've been having lots of complaints down there. Erosions where the road has been eaten away, and it has affected the gas pipes, where the gas company has had to come down there and shut off gas services to those streets. How did it, how did it come about that West Street was the more, the one that, the squeaker your wheel?
Yeah, well, I think the first million dollars is for things as they happen. So that's a million dollars. They need to have a contract for a non-call contracts. Our contractor has a sewer collapse, or there's something happens, they are able to address it. That's a problem evidently with the EPA consent decree. We haven't been addressing it quick enough. So this allows him to have, as things happen, allows him to get a contractor and at least stop the leakage, or whatever there is. Specifically, however, West Street apparently needed a lot of work, which they will be addressing in 2016. It sounds to me like they're probably gonna, he's gonna be coming back to the council perhaps, or some bonding authorization to do it permanently. There's a lot of work. So I think that's, I think both projects, really, both line items, are to handle problems around the city. He just identified approximately 600,000 just for West Street, 'cause I guess the needs are so great. But there's still a million available for the rest of the city.
Well, I understand, but that million, just by looking at the streets that are on there, Myrtle Street, I grew up in that area, and I can tell you that when the spigot overflows, it overflows almost to Park Street. We, I was, every single time that overflowed, I was one of the families that the national guard would come in there and take away, even as a child, because we needed to get out of there because of all the other situations. So I'm, if West Street has taken 600,000, I'm more than sure that all of these other streets that are on there, Myrtle Street will take that up on itself, on its own, just because I know the logistics and the years of the suffering that that neighborhood has had. So I know that that million dollars is gonna go really quick, and it's gonna go in that area. And, and I also understand, upon your explanation, that West Street, in conjunction with these other streets, not, I kind of understand, you know, because of the waterways, et cetera, how that would function. But to say that a million dollars is gonna be for all of these repairs is, it's, Myrtle Street alone will take up that million dollars. West Street, I mean, I just wanna know how, how this area became, like I said, like West Street, how did that become the squeaker wheel when we have even applied for, or tried to apply for grants to alleviate, alleviate the situations that are happening in Lower Prospect Hill? We've had meetings, we have, we have dragged state representatives more than once into the city for that, and, and that, those have not been the complaints that I have had off of West Street, or that we have had here. And this is my sixth year sitting here, and I'm going into my eighth year. So therefore, I mean, and these are things that I have been fighting for, councillor Alvarez has been fighting for in our district. How did this district get it? Why did this district get it first, if we have been crying out into the mountains for six years now and nothing has occurred? How did this one get preference?
I can't answer that, but however, in addition to this 1.6 million that's before you tonight, this is to handle, basically just to take care of emergencies. There is approximately 30 some odd million dollars of improvements to the sewer and water mains that are, that the, that the water department is still in the midst of now. So those are projects that are on the board, actually, we've already borrowed the money for, and those projects are ongoing. So I don't know how many of those projects address your neighborhood. Mr. Peña could, could explain that when he, when he's back from, from his vacation, but, you know, the, this money is to, if there's a sinkhole that develops tomorrow because of a pipe freeze?
I understand.
He's gotta have somebody to take care of it. For some reason, according to here, he's got, according to the explanation, West Street has been collapsing. I guess they've had quite a few problems, and they traced it to a pipe that needs to be either relined or replaced, a section. And if they don't do it, it's just gonna keep happening. So I think that's why the 600,000, he must have identified some emergency repair specifically for West Street, and that's why he broke that out. Instead of just asking for 1.6 million, he asked for a million for various projects that make up here, and then this 600, he knows. He's trying to address it.
Well, I kinda understand the reason why. We didn't have the, the school, the charter school. We did not have that on West Street back in the day when that plumbing was put in. So now we have all kinds of toilets flushing, all of the different services going in through there. Across the street on East, on Hayrow Street, we also put in, that school was not functioning as much as it is now. We put the highest, the higher grades on that end. So there is a lot more usage, and I, and I do see the usage that has been brought upon that area. But also, with that same token being taken, a lot of usage has been accommodated to my area also because of the new development over in the Methuen side. So therefore, you know, it's a give and given, a win and win, and I just was wondering why West Street got it before Prospect Hill that has been the squeaker wheel for the past six years. But thank you for your, for your explanation in this situation. And once this is approved, I would like to know if I can make a motion to have Mr. De Peña, this 30 million dollars, I would like to know in detail where this money is gonna go. I'm sorry, Peña, Brian Peña, not De Peña. To know where this money is gonna go, so that we could start making plans with the, with the residents and going out into the, to these areas and letting the residents know this is gonna be happening in your district, or in your, in your predominant area. Like, when is it gonna take effect, 2016, 2017? Just so that we know when they're gonna get some relief, some of these areas that really, really need it.
Definitely.
Because I do know the Myrtle Street and stuff like that. Like I said, it's from personal experience, not because anybody has told me that this area needs the money.
Thank you, councillor Monte.
Thank you.
Councillor Alvarez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, through you. I, I need to reiterate what councillor Monte is pointing out, because it was, it was an issue when we dealt with paving the streets. And West Street was one of the streets that was done. It was paved, it was stripped, all of that occur. But in, in the Prospect Hill area, especially in Morrison Street, behind the school, there's very easy, easily you can see the flooding taking place. So it's important, Director Adichello, for there to be some discussion, perhaps with yourself and Mr. Peña, to make certain that there is a policy for how these decisions are made. You know, a lot of people have lost their pools, have lost their yards because of all the debris, that there is no, zero cash basins, and it's all floating into their homes. And I guess, I haven't seen West Street be such a problem as I've seen other areas of the Yarlempton District and other areas of the city.
I, I know that there has been a study done, 'cause since I've been here in 2011, the water department has bonded for approximately, approximately 60-plus million dollars in projects. Much of it was the waterside water meters and things like that, but the last bond that we had, I think it was either 17 million or 23 million, that was all on sewer-related projects. So there has been a study done of what the highest priorities are, and, and the water sewer commissioner's trying to attack them as they, strategically, as he can. But there's a math, they've been developing a master plan for the water and the sewer side, because the system is over 100 years old. And, and to evaluate the system and then determine what areas do we get our biggest bang for our buck by replacing, relining, or, or leaving as is. So I think he has quite a, I think he'll be able to answer a lot of your questions.
That would be great, if you can whisper in his ear.
I will.
Excuse me, because I'm also thinking that we need to have an ordinance, which I forgot to put on the agenda, that deals with upgrading our infrastructure each time that the utility companies make a big hole, they dig up, and then they patch it up, and we always have a problem anyway. But if we were, as I said, I had this discussion with a constituent of mine, Mark Ray, and it makes a lot of sense, that if we were to upgrade the, the pipes or anything that, that is ancient and needs to, to be brought up to modern times, that in this way, we would be able to upgrade our infrastructure without even having to spend so much money. Because if the utility company does it when they open up, that would be in our best interest.
Yep. I know there's quite a bit of coordination with the utility companies and the paving to make sure the utility companies put it back the way it should, and not to rip up a street after we, after we've just ripped it up. We don't want them to rip it up right after we fix, putting it back together. Doesn't make sense. So coordinating with utilities, if we do have West Street open to do a water main, maybe they can get, do their utility work at the same time. So I know he's coordinating, trying to coordinate those efforts with utility companies.
Right, exactly. And I think we've heard a lot of that. In, I mean, it's practically the same council, with the exception of, I would say, three individuals. And in this, in this process, we have thought about coordinating, balancing things off, in order to save dollars and, and promote the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Alvarez Rodriguez. Councillors, any further questions?
I have another question. I have another question. Mr. President?
Councillor Maldonado, before any other councillors here? Okay, councillor Maldonado.
I believe there is a lot of questions that needs to be answered by Mr. Peña. Obviously, there are some concerns that the selection of specific streets and ignoring others is causing some concerns. I believe that this document should be tabled and ask Mr. Peña to come and, and see whether he can give us a good idea as to how different streets are selected, and what is the severity of those streets versus others. And I don't know, Mr. Clerk, does a motion to table supersede a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to table pending, pending an invitation to Mr. Peña to come and explain to us how streets are selected, and what are the rationale used in selecting.
Second.
Motion to table has been made and properly second. Those in favor to table say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, president.
Thank you.
President, we have roll call, please.
Councillor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Vice President, getting used to it. She used to be councillor Vice President. Present. Councillor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Maldonado?
Yes.
Councillor Monte?
Yes.
Councillor Abdu?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor De Peña?
Yes.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
And Councillor President?
Yes. Motion carries. Document 716 is bound to Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Document, that was an appropriation transfer from free cash on the amount of $300,000 to fire suppression overtime, placed on the agenda by Mr. Brian Mariotti, fire chief. Document 8- Document 816 is an appropriation transfer from Free Cash on the amount of $54,873 to equipment replacement, also placed on the agenda by Fire Chief Brian Mariari. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Next document is document 34315, which is a resolution for former City Councilor Oneda Aquino. It was placed on the agenda by former City Councilor Modesto Maldonado, by former Council President Modesto Maldonado. Former Councilor Aquino is not present, can?
What I would like to do is table document 34315 and go to document 34415, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Motion to table has been made and properly second. Those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. The next document is document 34415, resolution, Council, former Councilor Eileen O'Connor-Bernard. Councilor Maldonado?
Oh, I can't see it right.
I would like to ask our former colleague, Eileen Bernard, to come, come forward. Our last meeting, we, we were hoping that we could have recognized the three of you together, but we were not able to. So I guess we are going to do one at a time. To me, as you know, it has been a tremendous honor for having you serve in the City Council with me. I find you a person that is fair, that has been fair, that has been truthful to yourself, a person who has represented your district well, and, and you did such a fantastic job in the Subcommittee of the, of the Ordinance Committee and all the committees that definitely, I, I couldn't let it go. I simply couldn't let it go. And I want you to know that I have really appreciated the work that you have done, and I am sure that all my colleagues feel the same way. And that's the reason why I requested to do this. So, Bjork, I'm going to read the resolution. Being known that we, the members of the Lawrence, Massachusetts City Council, by and through this resolution, hereby recognize and honor former Lawrence City Council member Eileen O'Connor-Bernard for her contribution to the Lawrence Committee during her term as a member of the Lawrence City Council and hereby state as follows. Whereas Council Bernard was first elected to serve as District E Councilor with her election in November of 2009, beginning the first of three consecutive two-year terms in office from 2009 to 2015. Whereas although Council Bernard served as a member of the Housing Committee and the Vendor Committee of the Council, is that a, that's a, that's a mistake. Am I correct?
Yes.
No?
The Vendor Committee. Oh, okay. The effort, sorry, the effort and accomplishment of, as a, as a Chairwoman of the Ordinance Committee would have an enduring impact on the shape of Lawrence government. Whereas Council Bernard is best known for drafting and sponsoring legislation resulting from a review, an adoption of measures that have resulted in the amendment to provisions of the Lawrence City Charter which endure over time, whenever relied upon by future Council members who are called upon to exercise their authority based on City Charter provisions advanced by Council Bernard and adopted and, and approved by her colleagues. Whereas Council Bernard would also be remembered for the hard work, and long hours as Chairwoman of the Ordinance Committee, working tirelessly to address the business of the people whenever businesses, constituents, and residents who relied upon, upon the Ordinance Committee to be readily available, easily accessed, and responding without delay of those who rely upon a governmental function that cannot be dispensed without constant diligence and dedication. Whereas as a member of the City Council, Council Bernard has proven herself to be a tireless advocate for just cause, reason, and common sense presented before the Council on behalf of the people concerning issues of administration and government applied with a strong and unyielding voice. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence, Massachusetts City Council, hereby honor and recognize Eileen O'Connor-Bernard for her dedicated service on behalf of the people of Lawrence as District E City Council Member 2010, 2015, and hereby set our hand and cast the seal of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be affixed this 5th day of January in the year 2016. Thank you, thank you.
I just wanna very briefly say thank you to all of you so much. I, so many of you I would never have met if we did not serve on this body together. Not only did I meet you, but I got to know you. I hope you got to know me, and I, I consider you my friends. I genuinely enjoyed being a City Councilor. It definitely has its challenges. I wish you all the best. I encourage you to always keep the long-term best interests of a city in your hearts when you're in this job, to try to keep your skin as thick as you can. It, that's very difficult, and to treat your colleagues with dignity. I know that we all try to do that as best we can. Everyone has a bad day, everyone's tired once in a while. But I think as a body, we genuinely tried to work well together, and I think we did, and I wish you guys the best. And I am genuinely grateful for your willingness to serve. It's not an easy job. You take a lot of heat. It's, when things are good, everybody's on your team. When things are bad, you're all alone. And I am still upstairs. I'm always willing to help. If you guys ever need anything, please stay in touch. But thank you so much.
I'm hoping that Council Bernard will come at our next City Council meeting so that we can finally take the picture. Councilor Roger Tumi is away, so hopefully by the next meeting, we will be able to take finally the picture of the, of the City Council.
Thank you, Councilor Maldonado, and once again, thank you to former Councilor Eileen Bernhard. It is an honor for us to, you know, call you a friend and, you know, knowing that you're still gonna be around, it makes us feel very good. Now on to committee reports. We have document 29015, Chairwoman from Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Councilor President. Document 290-15 is a handicap parking at 57 Sargent Street, and that come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearings, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing. I'm properly second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Document 30715, Madam Chair.
Document 307-15 is a making Cornish Street southbound between Bruce and Jackson Street one-way in southerly direction that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order public hearings, and I make a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 31415.
Document 3, 314-15 is a water sewer department rule and regulation amendments that come out with a favorable recommendation pending a document draft from, from the Town Hall Department and to order public hearing, and I'm hearing, and I make it as a formal motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Discussion. Councilor Alvarez?
Just a very quick one, through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Were we able to get the changes that we requested?
No. What we come out was that we are going to go ahead and order public hearing pending that documentation. I don't know if the City Clerk has received anything. I haven't received any.
I'm just seeing this in the package for the first time, so I don't know if it's the original one or the one with the recommendations.
With the one with the recommendation.
Because we wanted the constituents to get the accurate one so they can participate.
So that's the one that we, that we are gonna be waiting for.
Now, when are we gonna make this available to people?
That is, that is a question.
As soon as I get it.
We're gonna put it on?
It's supposed to be in providing. I just don't know.
Online. This is the, um...
From Mr. Peña?
From Mr. Peña, from Commissioner Peña. And what we've done is update the rules and regulations that we first created last, last year. So this is an update.
I don't have the amended version yet. I will certainly.
Oh, so it's not the amended?
No, this is, this is the copy that I have on file. That's the copy you have.
Okay, so we didn't get it yet.
And I have no additional copies, one thing. So it must be the same version. Unless, let me just double check, be sure. This is the version I received on November 12th. So I would assume that it's the same version.
That's, that's the same.
Yeah. So it's not, I wasn't...
Yes, you were. You were present.
Is he gonna be?
Well, he said that by the time he gets back, he's gonna have it ready, so that's why we gave it some time. And we didn't wanna delay it, so we're gonna order public hearings. By the time it coming back, we either decide if we don't have the documents that we are waiting for, so we can choose just to table the documents until we get it.
But our discussion was also, excuse me, Madam Chair. Our discussion was also that we wanted to make sure that the people
Right.
get the package with the changes, so they're not seeing it for the first time on the day of the public hearing. I don't know if we can get in touch with him somehow, and...
We can.
Madam, Madam Chair. If you don't mind, may I share some information? Mr. Peña will not be back in time for the next full City Council meeting. It will take place after the next full City Council meeting.
So we can either table it here until he gets here, until we have some kind of idea when he's gonna be able to be present and not to order public hearing without knowing what is gonna happen since that we don't know, you know, when he's gonna be back.
I agree, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, would you like to do, make a motion to table this?
I would like to make a motion to take, to table document 314-15.
Motion has been made and properly second. Those in favor to table say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilor.
Now discussion and table. Okay, next document is document 31715. Madam Chair, the Ordinance.
Yes, document 317-15 is also handicap parking at 9 Clifton Street, and that come out with a favorable recommendation to order public hearings, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly second. Those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Document 32315, Madam Chair.
321.
32115, Madam Chair.
Document 321-15 is a handicap parking at 114 Exeter Street, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 32315, Madam Chair.
Document 323-15 is a handicap parking at 86 South Broadway, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Document 32915, Madam Chair.
325.
32515.
Document 325-15 is a taxi license Luis has been given agenda by Luis F. Fernandez, request to transfer taxi cab medallion to his son Luis M. Fernandez. That come out with a favorable recommendation. Before I make the motion, I just wanna explain a little bit for the ones who weren't present. I get a communication with Officers Flores. This has no money involved, so the reason that he wants to do that is because he wanna take a break from the business. All the papers are in order. I have it in here just in case there's someone is missing a paper. And I can make, I would like to make this as a formal motion to approve.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second, discussion.
Second, discussion. Councilor Alvarez?
Yes, through you, Mr. President. Madam Chair, I wasn't clear if we may, we haven't set the policy yet about how the medallions are gonna be given by us, the whole process. Because I'm wondering, is, is, is this part of our policy that you can, that your child can inherit your medallion? Because everybody's gonna wanna do that, so I just think we need to have a little discussion.
I asked the same question to Officers Flores, and what he said is that since the father owns the medallion, he has the right to sell to whoever he wants. It doesn't have to come through us. It wouldn't be something different if he give it back to the police and they can put in, in a second application. But since this is gonna stay in the family and it's no money involved, that is why.
Because I would think that even if he sells it, that we would have to meet the new owners, no? They would have, they would have to pay a fee.
Not if he is to, to his family. That's what, according to him, that's what he said.
Okay. I think we're gonna need to have more discussion around that. And, I mean, it seems like everybody believes that this should move forward, so I guess we should. But I have reservations about making decisions like this that can set policy.
I agree. That is why I was passing that information, because I think it's important for you to know, you know, and I have the same question. So if you feel comfortable, we can table and invite in Officers Flores, so that way we can open a question and he can be able to answer all the question that you might have.
I think that we're, we're gonna talk about it anyway.
Yes.
Because we have to set up the policy for how we, the council, are now gonna be giving medallions. I mean, we always did the licensing, but the medallions. So that, we can discuss it then. I don't wanna delay this if it's gonna be the same outcome. I'm sorry, everybody.
Motion to table. Did we already take a vote?
Motion to table has been made.
I second. Second, the motion.
And properly second.
Yes.
No discussion for table items? All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you. Madam Chair, document 32915.
Document 329-15 is a handicap parking at 14 Templus Street that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order public hearings, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Next document is document 32415. Mr. Chairman?
Could I ask the, the other member of the other committee, make the committee report on this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
What is it?
Document 32415, the Lawrence Recycling Department request.
Document 324-15 is a Lawrence Recycle Department request to accept a grant of 20,000 Department Environment Protection, and that has been put on the agenda by Moises Brea, and that come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, roll call, please.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council De Peña?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Abu?
Yes.
Council Almonte?
Yes. Could we, we, would we be able to have discussion after this vote, no, right? Because I kinda wanted to, Mr. Brea is here, and I kinda wanted to know, because he has a lot of projects going, what this money is gonna be used for. So I have that question. I wanted to ask that question, but since you guys started to take the vote. But I, I really wanted to find out, this $20,000 is gonna be used, from what I had heard with, of Mr. Brea, is gonna be used for all kinds of things that have to do with the school, and I think that is information that would be good for the public at home.
Thank you. Councilor Almonte, will the discussion change? Thank you. Uh, Councilor Almonte, will the discussion change the way that you will be voting potentially in the matter?
Why would I? This is, this has to do with the recycling, um, you know, with the, with the recycling and everything that has to do with our city. This is one of our departments that needs this push. This gentleman is very diligent. And I believe that we need to hear where this money's gonna go, because it's wonderful projects that he has at hand and I would love to hear that information.
Uh, but my, my question to you is, will the, uh, discussion?
Oh, my vote change? Absolutely not.
Okay, we'll move on to the roll call.
Councilor Almonte.
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado.
Yes.
Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
Present, noted. And Council President.
Yes.
Thank you. Wait, can I invite Mr. Brea up?
Uh, motion carries. What I will do, uh, for purposes of simply understanding the basis of the grant, I will allow, uh, Mr. Brea
Thank you.
for a brief, uh, explanation. At this point, it's not necessarily discussion, it's just explanation from him.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brea.
Thank you for being here, Moises, to explain the situation to us.
Hi, good evening, Council President, and good evening for, um, the rest of the councilors, and happy new year. So what I've handed Sandy to pass around is a very brief, uh, two-page document as to why we should recycle and how we should recycle. So it would mean a lot if you guys just read it on your free time, memorize it, and of course recycle the paper afterwards. And I could send you an electronic copy. So, this twenty thousand dollars, it means a lot to the city and to the recycle department, because it will allow us to use this money strictly for the recycling department only. So it can't be used for other purposes within the DPW. Now, last year, you guys, uh, gratefully accepted an eight thousand four hundred dollar grant. So we've moved up a big chunk. Before last year's grant, the recycle department had not received the grant for ten years. So I think that's, that's a huge step that we've made. Now with these funds, we're gonna be able to have, not only have more presence in the public schools, to have teachers work together in small groups to create green teams that would eventually graduate to become City of Lawrence environmental sustainability ambassadors. This is also gonna allow us to purchase, um, like, I don't wanna spoil it, but giveaways and to have a fun presence at all of our main, our major city events like Semana Hispana, the Three Saints Feast, and whatever else it qualifies for. I wanna have a big show, we have tents, giveaways, just to be very engaged with the, with the youth and of course with, with all citizens, with all residents. This money will allow me to, I'll have access to this funds even during a spending freeze and even for years to come. So the budget for the recycling is only gonna grow from now on, which I would love to be able to meet with you all collectively or individually. And we can tackle and discuss issues within each of your districts.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Brea.
Thank you.
Next document is document three thirty-eight fifteen.
Thank you for being here this evening. Gracias.
Three thirty-eight fifteen, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Council President. So the, uh, Budget Finance Committee voted with unanimous vote to send this document, three thirty-eight fifteen, the acceptance of a grant from Land and Water Conservation Fund for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, document three thirty-nine fifteen.
Document three, three nine fifteen, the Budget Committee voted with unanimous recommendation to send this document up to the full council to authorize and expand a grant from the Mass Alliance and On Team Pregnancy Incorporated for the sum of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? All those in fa, all those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Um, now let's move on to withdrawals items. Uh, document eighty-one fourteen.
Council President. Let's make a motion that we take document eighty-one fourteen, eighty-one dash fourteen, ambulance contract and potential earnings, city review. Make a motion to withdraw.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second.
Sorry, what document was that?
Eighty-one fourteen.
Eighty-one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you. Um, we have no old business. Uh, any table matters that you would like to take off the table at this moment?
Um, Council President, if I may.
Councilor Almonte.
Thank you, through you. We had, um, last meeting, I had asked, uh, for document ninety-two fifteen, which is called here the Hosted Community Agreement. Um, I briefly passed around information, I'm not sure if all of yous got it, which is a letter, um, from Abel Vargas, which is our Business and Economic Development Director, which is a list of all existing and recently, um, expiring TIFs and the addressed values, um, that are being taxed on. It's the eleven by fourteen that was, um.
Uh, Councilor Almonte, which document specifically?
Ninety-two fifteen.
Ninety-two fifteen.
Correct.
Uh, would you like to make a motion to take it off the table items?
If I may, please.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor to take it off the table items, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Almonte.
I'm sorry?
Vargas.
Mr. Vargas left. Oh, is he out?
He's coming.
Oh, thank you. Um, well, this document is, um, it also has a list of the TIFs and reports on their, uh, total job creation, um, the list of the TIFs since nineteen ninety-five, and the active, expired, or decertified are on here. I wanted to give this information to you all, um, and I do know that, um, to digest, um, this information and all of these numbers, um, so that we can have, you know, the proper questions and try and figure out the proper channels, being it that it is, um, you know, crunching numbers and, and all of that good information. I wanna make sure that we do due diligence with this, because it's something that affects the city as a whole. It, it affects the economic development of the city and we wanna make sure that we do what is correct, not only for the, the businesses that will be coming into our city, but for the residents who have to, um, uh, have some of the, uh, absor, uh, absorb some of the, the taxes and the revenues that are not paid among, uh, during the TIF period or, or relief that we give these companies. So what I wanted to do at this time is make sure that all of yous have this information. And I wanted to, um, just put it on record that if any of yous have any other information that you feel is pertinent, so that we could pull this off table, um, next time we do have our meeting. Although, 'cause I wanna make sure that we have any questions that need to be asked, any information that we think we may need further than this. I wanna give everyone the, the fair opportunity and chance to request that and to be able to have our questions answered in a fair way. So at this moment, what I would like to do is to put into record that we did receive this from Mr. Abel Vargas. And just briefly look it over if you could and see if there's any other information that you feel you may want to, um, have present for our next meeting. And, um, we can ask, uh, Mr. Vargas to be here and Mr. Iannello, who was the other person that we had asked to be here for this meeting, so that we can get our, our questions answered. So I'll leave it open for any of the other councilors at this moment, if they have any recommendations.
Councilors, any questions?
Yes.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I'm wondering, we, we had a discussion as to the possibility of putting a clause
Yes.
right, in our future contracts.
Yes.
Uh, which was something that I understood from Mr. Vargas that is implied. So in some sense, it wouldn't be a bad thing
Go ahead.
to put the actual clause in the, in the contract. Um, so I'm also requesting that when we have that discussion, could we have the, um, the sample you got from?
From the city attorney?
No, that you got, well, you can do that too, but you got a sample from another town.
From Newport, uh, from Newton.
Where was that?
From Newton, Mass.
What?
Newton.
Are you sure?
Mass, yes. Yes, Newton, Mass.
All right, so from Newton, if we could have that, it'd be great to.
Okay.
I don't know, do you have it?
I don't have that with me at the moment, but that's the one that attorney body, um, modeled after. Then the other thing, um, just piggybacking, I'm sorry, but, um, what, uh, would also be good for us to have is, um, the one that we sign now, the one that, the, the contract that we have now, that, um, we TIF on, um, without, obviously without the information as to, you know, dollar cents or whatever, because it's just an example. So that we can review the language and see where the language that we're trying to put in so that our city is protected would fit in. So that, that way we can combine both documents and make it one, and then it could be approved at hopefully our next meeting.
So it would be like a boilerplate?
Yes.
A template, but, Mr.
Like a template.
Mr. President?
Yes, Madam.
Um, is it okay for us to, to roll up our sleeves and work at this level?
I am sorry, can you repeat the question? I couldn't hear it.
Um, is it a good idea for us to roll up our sleeves and work on this issue at this level?
I think that i- if it's gonna entail a strong effort from the subcommittee, it should be referred back to a subcommittee, uh, rather than us dealing with all of it at the full council level. Simply because I believe that there will be a lot of in-depth information, uh, that will be necessary.
I think so too, because, um, if, if you don't mind, um, Mr. President, I think that this is a very good idea.
Uh-huh.
You know, sort of revamp the way we put our contracts together for the TIFs. And, um, and to look at the samples and what the city attorney put together, so it's actual work. Now, it's not money per se, because we're looking at, I guess, contracts in the, the process, and not actual dollars. So where would that go if, um, where would you see that going?
If I could make a recommendation, I'm sorry.
I do not have a question, uh, an answer for you at this moment, but, uh, uh, what, what would be the recommendation?
My recommendation would be committee in a ho, as a whole, because we all need to be there to discuss. This is such, this is something that we to, need to discuss in such in-depth, that if there's only four of us as a committee, then when we bring it up to full council, it's, we're gonna relive the whole moment again. So I believe that, or I feel that it would be, um, at a, at a better, um, interest for all of us to be able to discuss this at a subcommittee, which would be committee in the whole, um, as a whole, so that that way all of us can discuss this issue, hash it out, and then when we send it up to full council, bring it back here, we're not asking all the same questions of the same people and bringing everyone back.
Right. So I'm gonna conclude, I, I, um, Mr. President, I agree with that recommendation. And, um, but I, I feel it's important to make sure that we not only have this, um, that Mr. Vargas has made available, but also the Newton policy, how they do it, and, um, the city attorney's piece.
I'll make sure to put that together.
Do you have it?
I will make sure to put that together.
Great.
Yes.
Um, 'cause we don't know if the state has to, you know, uh, give a word or something, or an approval.
No petition, I believe.
I know we, we do have, um, Director Vargas with us today.
Yeah.
Director Vargas.
Thank you, Abel Vargas, Business and Economic Development Director, on two twenty-five S X G. Um, first to, to address, um, Councilor Alvarez's question in terms of the ability of this body to make those changes. You can, I, I have an additional host agreement, as was referenced in the ordinance. The state allows you to do that without, um, requesting any specific permission or recommendations from them, you are able to do that. Um, but I, before that, you know, I, I read the draft ordinance, it was sent over to me by, by the city clerk. Uh, so I just wanna just, as you, as you spend some more time reviewing the ordinance and have some, some thoughts and, and as you go back and collect some of your questions, um, there's, there's two things on here, and I think that the document is a good document. Though Newton is a different community than, community than we are, um, different consumer base, um, different levels of income, uh, different constraints than we have, and I'm not sure if you wanna necessarily model our ordinance that Newton has, uh, has implemented for the City of Lawrence. Um, we're with the poorest community in the state and they're up in the top ten of fifteen percent. But the, the two things are, are the following. Um, the draft ordinance requires, um, the EACC, which is the governing board that approves, um, um, TIF agreements at the state level. There's a, a reporting requirement that the EACC, uh, report directly to the city council.
I'm sorry, the, the acoustics here are a little
I'm sorry.
challenging for me, so.
So.
Getting up there and then.
All right. So the, the, the draft ordinance makes a recommendation.
What was it, A C C?
EACC. It's a state governing board that, you know, they, um, the, the draft ordinance makes a recommendation that the EACC should direct, should report directly to the city council. Um, and it gives the city council additional authority to, um, to engage the business owner and to engage directly, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, directly with the EACC. So, you know, currently the way it works is, um, the, the, there's an online data source that you sign into. So someone from my office could sign in, check what the, what the status of the TIF is, how many jobs it created. And Councilor, um, I, I gave you that packet and I didn't give it to everyone just because it's summarized in the sheets that I gave you. But I could give you this whole packet, this is every TIF, um, individually.
That would be good.
We took this information, we put it in the spreadsheet, um, but I could give you the actual reports if you'd like as well. But we have access and I could give you the sign-in if you'd like as well, it's just a simple sign-in. And you could go in and you could see, um, what they report. And they reported based off of what they get from the Department of Revenue, how many jobs you create and so on and so forth. Every year, by January thirtieth, each one of our, January thirtieth of, for example, current year, each member or each, each business that has received the TIF is required to report on their job, um, their job creation and the tax, the taxes that are paid to the city and all this other stuff. And every year we pull it. And every year we put it into the spreadsheet and, and we're able to report it and keep track of it. That's what we do. EACC doesn't give us anything. They give us a sign-in and we use, it's a, it's a, it's a tool, um, that they make available to municipalities to kinda check on these things. So that, that's, that's the, the first item. And the second one that I, I have a little bit of an issue, um, with is, um, la, um, item number seven in the, in the, the ordinance. And that, I don't know if this is the exact ordinance, but it's the, the items that would be included in the ordinance, um, makes a recommendation that, I'll read it, upon default, the subsequent decertification of the project and TIF agreements and tax exemptions provided by either TIF agreement and/or host agreement, um, should immediately become due and payable. I interpret that as, if I'm a business and I'm in a ten-year TIF and at year five, I'm unable to meet the requirements of the TIF as approved by the city council, I am required to pay the tax relief that I received from years one to five. So if I'm a business, um, let's use Bojo Campero, for example, um, and I receive a ten-year TIF and I go out of business like Bojo Campero did, and they went out of business in year three. Presumably they received a tax credit for the first one, for year one, two, and three. This ordinance would require a business that just went out of business, um, and, and ask them, you have to pay all the relief that we gave you, um, from day one. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I, it's, 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 uh, it's a, I think it's, um, it, it, it makes sense to an extent, um, 'cause they made a commitment to create jobs and to stick around for a long period of time. But the, my argument is that even though they didn't commit to the full job creation number or they're no longer in business, they still made a, an initial substantive investment into the city. Um, I'm not sure what the exact amount number was for that particular, particular one, but the investments were still made. So, you know, it's, 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 to me, it's counterintuitive to kind of administer these programs, uh, with the business community. And it makes scared some people away.
Council Almonte.
Um, Council President, okay, for number one, the requirement, the requirement of the ACC. The new N piece, what I want to have, um, hopefully revised and be, be implemented into our ordinance would not be, um, how they conduct or how they TIF a client. What I want to have happen is that we are protected, that if they walk out on us, uh, because what you're trying to say is, oh, what if they go bankrupt? Okay, well, they can, they can play bankrupt, which is basically, that's another loophole that they can use to not pay back. Maybe we can discuss a certain percentage that they would have to pay back, because that's what I'm trying to avoid. If we give you a ten-year TIF and here you go crying in five years and after you've already, um, and, and your sixth year, you're gonna have to, you're gonna start paying back to the City of Lawrence, then on your fifth year, you think you can walk out and say, I'm gonna be, you know, uh, free of any, um, any, anything that's going to hold me to not, to break that. So maybe we can work on a percentage from what we TIF that person from the first to fifth year, or, or maybe we could look over, because every, every business will be its own individual, uh, its own individual self. Because not every business is gonna run. Because not every business is gonna run the same way, not every business is gonna have every problem. And maybe there's some businesses that we can't, um, we can't, uh, hold them to their percentage of employment, because maybe we don't have the people in the City of Lawrence who can take up that employment. Therefore, is, if, that, that goes into, um, the, the building blocks that I have been trying to say, go into the schools and tell these kids, this is the position that could be waiting for you. This is, take this in school. Go take this at, at NECO. You can, you know, first year, second year, you come in as an apprentice, and we can make it happen. You know, those are the building blocks that I believe that in economic development will definitely help our city. But the piece that I want to take from Newton is not their entire contract. What I wanna take is what's gonna help us protect our city and the taxpayers that, that pay that tax money. Because that, that would be just creating another loophole for them. Why, why even bother to do this? Because there's gonna be this loophole that, you know, uh, um, that you're able to do this. No, that's what I want to stop. I wanna hold, I wanna hold their hand to the fire, that you're gonna have to comply with this. Make it work. We gave you the confidence to come into our city, and we did this for you. Give us the confidence back. Make it work.
Okay.
We, we helped you to make it work, now you need to show us that you can make, help and make it work for us too.
Wonderful. Any additional questions?
Number two, I'm sorry, and then number two, um, the review. Um, reviewing that, that piece on number seven is something that we can do, where you're saying that, uh, the percentage-wise, um, we could, like I said, every, every single business is gonna be its own identity, and therefore, I, I believe that, um, or is there supposed to be? I believe that there's supposed to be a review board that reviews, um, these TIFs to make sure that they comply. So upon this, this review board should, um, give us, um, a, a, uh, a feedback as to what the review was for, um, a specific company, and if we see that they're in danger of bankruptcy or something like that in year three, you know, that's something that economic development should be looking at. If this person is in danger of bankruptcy, what can we do to help that business? Because we want our money come year five. Come year six, we, that's why we're, we're, we're making them come here. We're not making them come, well, we're not telling them they can come to the City of Lawrence, so they can fill their pocket. No, we're, we're having them come to the City of Lawrence. So I'm, I'm, from what I've been hearing, so to economically develop our city, to make our city grow, to have the, the, the economic development picture that has been painted to us for the past two and a half years, I wanna see that happen. But the only way that we're gonna see that happen is if we hold the butt to the fire of the people who are coming in here telling us, believe in us. We're gonna believe in you, but you need to come in here and comply. And this is the way that we're gonna be able to do that. So I think that we should figure out a way that we could do a percentage instead of going back. Um, thi- this is all, um, that's why we're here. We're here to discuss these issues. And if number seven needs to be, um, a, 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 a small paragraph that needs to be discussed, dismantled, and put back together, that's what we're here for, and we will hash that out.
Okay.
So those are the two points that I wanted to make and, and make clear, that on the new in contract, it's just the protection piece that I want.
Okay.
Not a piece by piece, because I do know that they're more affluent than us.
Thank you, Counselor.
But you know what? We need to start, we need to start somewhere. Our affluency needs to come from somewhere. And number two would be the review of number seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselors, any additional questions, comments?
Yes, I do have questions.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Uh, Mr. Vargas, can you provide us with the correlation between, uh, on the TIF that we already have in place? The correlation between the, uh, the original investment that those, uh, business put into the city and the saving that they have on tax incentive?
Yeah.
And also, can you provide us with that, uh, if any, uh, of those companies exceed the JAX, the job rotation that they create, and which one didn't? If that data is available.
Right. So, you know, I, when I, when I first came on board, I, you know, the, the first thing I did when I renegotiated our first TIF is, I went back historically, historically, and tried to figure out what has been done in the past. And, and what I tried to do with Excel and was, was figure out if there was some correlation between investment or job creation, um, that reflected upon the relief that we were giving to these, to these businesses. So for example, if you, um, if you invested fifty million dollars, would we give you a hundred percent relief? And if you invest five million dollars, would we give you an eighty percent relief? As a basic kind of, um, um, correlation between investment and relief, right? And I found that there wa, there wasn't. There was no, there was no direct correlation and/or formula being used to kinda determine, um, the investment or job creation, and attach that to an actual, uh, uh, numbers of, of relief. Am I, am I clear? My explanation is clear?
Yep. Makes sense to me.
So, my, my experience is that the numbers and the relief is anecdotal and doesn't have much of any substantive, um, backing, uh, that, that shows any consistency, consistency throughout the years. Um, so you're right, we don't have that. And, and to your, to your point, we probably should develop something that's, that's more formula-based versus the economic development guy saying, I think this is a great idea. Um, 'cause then it holds, it holds some consistency, and the council knows what to expect from a certain level of investment, um, and it'll guide, there'll be a guiding principle going forward when we issue these TIFs in the future. So I think that's a great point, that we could work together to kinda figure out what that level of investment looks like, and what, what, what level of investment, um, prompts what level of relief.
Yeah, because it's, to, to me, it's very important to, uh, to be able to see, uh, a building come into the city, uh, I mean, a, a new business come into the city, and having a building that we're not using completely right now and, uh, and being rebuilt, uh, with an ori, with an original investment, uh, that we might don't have right now, that's very important too.
Right.
Uh, and, and that's why I kinda come up with that question, because, uh, that's, that's something that we should be looking for as well. Because, uh, if there is any business that leave the city, uh, that is also, uh, an investment left by that company. Uh, and that if, if that's, that the case, that we also need to be looking into that as well.
Right. And I.
Counselors, are there any further questions?
I just, I just wanna make just, just one point. I know, we, we all know this, and just, just for the, for the, uh, purposes of the public, um, you know, I, I, I gave you this, this, this one spreadsheet or this one, um, slide from the spreadsheet that the state provides.
Okay.
It's a, sorry, it's a PowerPoint slide. And it kinda gives you a sense of, of, um, a, a picture por, a picture understanding of what, what it looks like. Um, and if you look at the blue here, we usually assess a baseline value of the taxes that are being charged on a business. So if you're, if you come in and your business is assessed at a million dollars, um, the TIF agreement suggests that you'll continue to be assessed at that million dollars. If you make an investment of additional five million, what the TIF does, it allows you to continue to be taxed at that million-dollar mark versus the million dollars plus the investment you're being made, that, that you, that you're making. So i- it's an incentive for businesses to come, 'cause they'll continue to pay taxes on a lower assessed value, even though they're making substantial investments. And the way we've designed our TIFs, it's been a, a scaling down of, of the relief over years, so it'll be a hundred percent relief, eighty percent, ninety percent, you know, so on and so forth. And the basis is, the relief is on the additional investment versus the baseline valuation, um, that the businesses or the property that they own has assessed that. Um, and the, the second thing, I wa, I wanna make sure that, that, that we, that I.
Just plain water. It sounds like this is gonna be a really exciting discussion.
Hmm.
And I'm looking forward to it being in committee, because it's, if we have it now.
It will be lengthy.
There's no point sending it to committee.
At this point, at this point, actually, I would like to, um, reassign.
I'll motion to table.
Motion to table.
But I would.
Motion has been made.
I, wait, wait, wait.
Wait, 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 yeah, they, um, they were.
Aren't you gonna send it?
My idea is to send it back to the ordinance committee, not the, the council as a whole as a fact. Uh, originally, it had been in the ordinance committee. I think that the discussion should continue, uh, at that level, at this point.
If, if I may through you, my recommendation would be committee as a whole if we could, 'cause like I said, if we're gonna go to ordinance and only four people are gonna be able to talk about and hash out the situation, when we come back to full council, we're gonna redo those two, three hours. I think it's, I think it's, it will be redundant, um, because there are gonna be counselors who are obviously not, probably not gonna be able to make it for that ordinance meeting, and we're all gonna have questions. So you guys are gonna have to sit, whoever's gonna be on the ordinance committee, sit through a two-hour dis- dissertation on this discussion, participation, mending regulations, revising, and then the other three are gonna be, or four, actually, five are gonna be left out.
Point, point well taken there. Uh, I do appreciate the, the, um, valuable comment, but I do think that we could review videos and also read minutes, and that way, we'll be up to date with information, uh, to ensure that we have.
It is, it would be my pleasure if you would like to sit through another two hours and make it more redundant for the council. Makes no sense to me, but that's okay. That's your choice. You're the president.
So, at this point, I would like to reassign this, uh, document to the ordinance subcommittee. Counselors, are there any additional, uh, table?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to take document twenty-four fifteen through document thirty-fifteen as a block out of, out of, uh, table documents.
Uh, motion has been made, and is there a second?
Second.
Properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The aye's a ve. Counselor Maldonado?
Yes, uh, Counselors, uh, a while back, uh, we have been discussing, uh, putting really control on those areas that are under the supervision of the city council. We have three areas, basically, three areas of supervision under which we have control. One is the city attorney, uh, the second is the election office, and obviously, the third is the city council. These, uh, ordinances that were proposed and discussed, uh, and which we conducted a public hearing on these, uh, ordinances, uh, were table in order to seek additional, uh, additional legal advice. We have not received any legal advice on these matters, because obviously, the mayor, uh, uh, went out and sought legal advice, uh, from a friendly and maybe biased, in my opinion, uh, uh, legal firm, which indicated that, that the power of hiring and firing was solely the, 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 the responsibility of the executive, of the executive branch. Nevertheless, this council has the power to hire and fire, uh, the city attorney, and he also has the power to hire and fire our city clerk. Uh, nevertheless, we don't have the power to hire our own confidential secretary. That, to me, doesn't make sense. Uh, and it seems to me that if we are going to have a true separation of power between the executive branch and the legislative branch, then we should have the authority to hire people within those departments that we supervise, okay? Uh, so that they be responsible to us. To me, it doesn't make any sense that the mayor would hire our, our city, our, our secretary. It doesn't make sen, any sense. If it is, if, if our secretary is our confidential secretary, doesn't make sense that somebody else hired that person, which is gonna be confidential to us? Doesn't make sense that the, the, uh, the, uh, the mayor, uh, would hire a confidential secretary to the city attorney who is under our responsibility? Doesn't make any sense that the mayor hires and fires, uh, personnel that are under our supervision under the, under the election office, without even consulting the city clerk who is responsible for supervising those individuals? To me, it doesn't make sense. And it seems to me that, uh, in order to create a, a true separation of power, then we need to have the power to hire and fire by the recommendation of the city attorney, by the recommendation of the city clerk, by the recommendation of this council, that we should be able to hire and fire those individuals who come out under our responsibility. And, and we need to go, to consolidate that. And again, I'm mentioning that, the fact that we, we already conducted a public hearing on this, on these ordinances, and we should go ahead and finally, uh, take a vote and approve it. Again, to me, it doesn't make any sense that our confidential secretary be hired by somebody else. Okay? That is our responsibility. To me, it doesn't make any sense that, uh, people are placed and hired, uh, uh, by the mayor, uh, at the election office. For example, let me, let me give you a good example. One individual that was hired, uh, in the election office was doing after our work and weekends work for the mayor in the election office, an area that we supervise. What was going on there on the weekends and afterward, after hour? We don't know. But to me, it doesn't make sense that, 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 uh, the executive branch can control those situations without our permission. Okay? And again, uh, i- if those of you, if some of you feel uncomfortable, uh, about, uh, about the illegal opinion that was given by a firm, uh, that we haven't even, uh, seen, and we haven't even asked questions about, uh, we can go out and seek a different, uh, a second legal opinion. But it seems to me, okay, that the only way that we are going to separate the power of the executive branch and the legislative branch is by having total control of those areas that are under, under our supervision. Okay? So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm requesting that, uh, that, well, uh, if there, again, if there is a concern that we should seek a, a second legal opinion, I would be open to that. But I definitely would like to, uh, unless somebody feel uncomfortable, I would like to make a motion that we approve those ordinances, uh, twenty-four fifteen through thirty-fifteen, so that we consolidate and, and separate the power of the executive branch and the legislative branch.
I would second that.
A motion has been made and has been properly seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Whoa, whoa.
No.
Discussion.
Discussion, yes.
Counselor LaPlante?
All right, so let me get this straight. We've had on this agenda tabled, it's a very, very small number, twenty-seven fifteen, would give me the indication, and this is probably introduced maybe last January or February timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
We had a public meeting, a public hearing, and it says, sir, that the public meeting is open.
It remains open.
The public hearing is still open according to the document.
It's still open, yes.
So we.
Has not been closed.
So we have not closed the public hearing.
We did not close.
So we cannot take a vote on this right now until the, first of all, the public hearing has been closed. So that's the first thing. Second thing, that the, Mr., the counselor at large made several comments regarding his assertions of what the mayor has said, and I haven't had or seen any kind of correspondence or comments from the mayor with respect to these positions and what he believes his authority is. And, and I think frankly, it's, it's a bit of a, um, we, we have several new counselors who have not even been involved in this debate.
Yes.
And to ask them to take a vote this evening on something that, that is their first time having a chance to take a look at it, I think is categorically unfair.
Mm-hmm.
So, so, so a couple things. I, I, I totally disagree about having a vote. I would like to hear from the mayor himself. I mean, or you believe that there's been some sort of a, a outside.
Uh, Joseph.
Through you, Mr. President, it's been some sort of outside attorney that's been providing an opinion. We don't have that in our packets. We need to be refreshed as to what that opinion is.
Point of information.
Um, so, my sense is that we should not be supporting that this evening until we get some more information.
Okay. Point of information.
Uh, I provided each one of the counselors with the legal opinion of the firm that was hired. And, and I agree with you, Mr. LaPlante, that, that we should give the other council members the opportunity to hear more about this.
Right.
Okay? Uh, and definitely, uh, I think that probably, uh, for the next meeting, may I suggest, Mr. President, that for our next meeting, that we open the public hearing and advertise that we are going to continue the public, the public, uh, hearing on these ordinances, and also to, uh, look again at the legal opinion, uh, that was provided by the, uh, by the outside attorneys that the mayor hired to provide a legal opinion. And if we need to get a second opinion, I would like to get a second opinion. But, but I agree with Mr. Laplante, uh, we should give the new councilors the opportunity to look at the, at the illegal opinion that was given and, and review this whole situation, so I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with, I, I, again, that's what I, I suggested, that if, that if we don't feel comfortable in taking a vote, that we should, uh, uh-
Thank you.
-seek a second opinion.
Thank you, Councilor Maldonado. Um, Councilor Laplante, you still have the floor?
If, if there is no further discussion, I don't want a stymie debate, but I'm gonna make a motion that we, that we table this document at this point to allow, um, the previous speaker to provide that information to this body, so that the body can be prepared to be, uh, more informed, um, as to a vote and how we should proceed whether we're going to-
Motion, motion to table-
So if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to table.
Has been made and properly second.
Could I have a moment of discussion before that motion?
Uh, no discussion for table, uh-
I wasn't able to speak on that matter before he made his motion.
Unfortunately, once a motion to table has been made, no further discussion is allowed.
Okay.
Council President, if it's okay, for the purpose of comedy and to provide, um, some, some professionalism, I, I'll withdraw my motion to table to hear the council from District A, and then I'd like to take the floor back after that discussion.
Thank you. I just wanted to-
Councilor Armonte?
Thank you, Council President, through you, and, and thank you, um, Councilor Laplante, for ceding to me, uh, ceding the floor to me. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, um, what has been said, um, our confidential secretary really is our confidential secretary, um, and I had heard conversations of, um, of other bodies, um, hiring a new, uh, confidential secretary for our city council, which was, should be done, uh, by that person coming in front of the personnel committee and going through the hiring process as, as such. Um, the other situation is our bodies of city attorney, um, or the government body, governing bodies up in that area, um, have been hired and not brought in front of the city council also. Um, our, um, DPW director is a position that should have been, um, brought in front of city council, we have somebody that's in there also, you know, these are, these are situations that we wanna be part of. I mean, even just because we're not able or, um, not allowed to represent our districts as we should during municipal hours, so that we're here to municipal, during the municipal hours, to be able to be here for our constituents, so that they have someone to come to here in this office, doesn't mean that, that we're not going to stand by and make sure that we get our things done the right way. It's a little more difficult because we don't have the ability to call people after municipal hours to get some of this stuff resolved, but I believe that, um, you know, continuing to work together to get this done, we'll get it done. But it's really hard when we're overstepped our boundaries and not given the opportunity to serve as a legislative body, to be able to make some of these decisions, and that's where it makes it harder. We're not trying to point fingers here, but we're just trying to give, I mean, the little power that we have, let us use it. Can you please allow us to, to let our growth be made by the responsibilities that we have to uphold these positions and, and to have these people come before us? Um, it's not that any recommendation is a bad recommendation, of course, we would take recommendations, but as a hiring body, as a legislative body, um, and, and separating one power from the next, it's like mom and dad, you know? Mom says no, and then you go to dad, no. One person sends something, and, and if mom is the one that, that, that's the cook of the house, and dad is the one that goes out, that's how it stays. You know, you're not gonna reverse, reverse, uh, scenery just for the, for the, for the sake of reversing that, so I feel that, um, this is a great, um, decision to do this. I, I, I do believe that we should table the item and, um, and continue, you know, to work on this, because these are items that we should, um, hash out and, like I said, given the opportunity.
Thank you.
To exercise our rights.
Just, just one thing, Mr. Laplante, will you accept an addendum to your motion? Uh, the addendum is simply to, uh, to, uh, that at the next meeting, once the documentation is provided, that we, uh, continue and open up the, uh, public hearing on this matter?
That's a decision for the council president to make, whether or not he wants to go ahead and order the public hearing, I don't wanna infringe on his, on his authority on that, so.
Uh, I, I believe that if this council votes to continue the, uh, the, uh, the open public hearing, uh, this will not be a matter of the president to vote on, to decide, this is a matter of the council to, to decide on.
I defer to the council president on that decision.
At this point, I would prefer to actually gather the information that we have in order to ensure that when we publish the public hearing, it is with the accurate information as will be.
It's been published. It's in the middle of a public hearing, is the proceeding at this point.
We might, uh, based on the, the discussion that we're having today-
It may be published, right.
We might have to republish because information might actually change, uh, depending on the information that we gather. Uh, so at this point, I, I don't think that we should continue with what we have published previously, just for the fact that we don't know if anything will change. Uh, so at this point, I would not, uh, suggest that we continue with the public hearing.
Thank you, available.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Motion to table has been made.
Second.
Properly second, those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Uh, thank you. Councilors, any additional table items that you'd like to take off the tables?
Just Council President, I'd like to-
Council Alvarez?
Thank you. Um, Council President, I would just suggest that if anybody has anything at this level, um, this might not be the only things, there are probably others, that we try to eliminate those that are no longer valid, okay?
Okay.
Like, I don't know, there's the block party.
Sixty, I don't know, unless you're-
Definitely, um-
Oh, yeah, I, I, I-
Councilor Maldonado?
I believe that we left it there because it's gonna be, eventually we are going to do one. Oh, you, which one are you talking about?
Document-
The block party.
That's one.
Yes, eventually, well, let's move it on, I can reintroduce it, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I'm just saying that whatever is here that we-
Can I please get a motion to take it off the table matters?
So moved. Second.
Second.
So, Document 2615, motion has been made to take it off table matters, um, properly second, those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Councilor Alvarez?
Withdrawal without prejudice, yeah.
Okay, motion, is there a motion?
That's the motion, yeah.
Second.
Uh, motion to withdraw without prejudice has been properly made, made and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Uh, Council President, uh, may I make a motion to take Document 2115 out of table matters?
Document, uh, motion has been made.
Second.
Document 2115 is a Lawrence Superior Court request, the assistance of the City of Florence regarding vehicular parking in front of the courthouse on Common Street. It's been properly second to take off the table matters, all those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it, Councilor Maldonado?
Uh, Council President, uh, the, uh, Lawrence Superior Court, the judge, uh, responsible for the Lawrence Superior Court, made a request, uh, for some parking space. I had discussions with the mayor regarding, uh, the allocations of some parking space for the court, specifically for the use of the court and the personnel. Uh, we never actually got to an agreement, and I would like to ask the council president to, uh, sit down with, uh, the mayor, uh, to see whether we can come to an agreement as to, uh, as to whether we are going to, uh, uh, enter into an, uh, to agree with, with the Superior Court as to how many parking spaces and whether that we're gonna charge them a fee or not, okay? I know that, uh, in the discussions, uh, because it came to the, to the ordinance committee, uh, we had discussed the idea of assigning a fixed rate, uh, and provide some parking. The mayor mentioned that, that we have some, uh, uh, spaces in the front of, of, of City Hall that are, uh, that are not under the jurisdiction of the parking, uh, company, of the parking meter company. So, uh, it seems to me that we can, uh, uh, negotiate something with the, with the judge and the mayor in order to allocate, uh, so, uh, they are looking for a total of eight parking spaces, uh, so it i- it is possible that we can, uh, allocate some in the front, some here at City Hall, and some in the parking lot behind the court. Again, they are ha- they are facing, uh, a, a real problem of, of whenever they bring prisoners, uh, uh, that they don't have, they have to get those prisoners off on the street, which is not safe, uh, and they, and also they are looking for, uh, uh, parking space for judges and also other personnel, uh, of the court, so, uh, what I'm looking for is that, that the, uh, the council president will be able to sit down with the mayor to discuss, uh, the, the exact location and allocation of parking spaces and whether we will charge them a, uh, a fixed rate and what that fixed rate is going to be.
Thank you for the recommendation, Councilor Maldonado. Any further questions or discussions on this matter? Okay?
So, the request, I'm sorry.
Councilor Armonte, Councilor Laplante?
Thank you, Council President. I just have a quick question, I thought that, um, when they bring, and, when they bring prisoners in and when they take prisoners out, there is that, um-
Not in this court.
Oh, not in this court?
No.
Oh, I thought that that was a way out of-
This is a very old court, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, this one here is the one you're talking about?
This one here, right.
Oh, the little one, I'm sorry, I thought it was the one, the big one on Appleton.
Councilor Laplante?
Is there a motion on the floor, or is there a-
We do not have a motion on the floor.
No, there's no motion, and simply, uh, as a recommendation-
Take it off for discussion.
As a recommendation, uh, that the, uh, that the council president sit down with the mayor to, uh-
Okay, um, all right, so can I please get a motion to table at this moment?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion to table has been made and properly second, those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it, thank you. Um, councilors, if there's no further items, I would like to move into new business. Uh, Document 316 is a request to pay fiscal year 2015 bill. It was placed on the agenda by, uh, city clerk, William Maloney, is going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Document 416 is a disclosure by municipal employee of financial interest, Robert E. Runch, principal account clerk, is going to the ordinance committee. Document 516 is 2016 taxi delivery renewals, Go United Express Corporation, American Taxi, Liberty Taxi, Merrimack Taxi, Popular Taxi, JC Transportation, Valley Transportation, Integrity Medical Transportation, High Class Transportation, Reliable Transportation, Vegas Transportation-
It's time.
Samarita Transportation, Rogers Transportation, Town Liberty LLC, Helping Hands Multiple Service Transportation, Quality Care LLC, Five Star Express Transport, Transportation, and AAF, AAF, AAF Transportation. It was placed on the agenda by Officer Flores, is going down to the ordinance subcommittee. Document 6616 is a transient vendor license, 48 Brook Street, Rafael Gonzalez, ordinance committee. 916, Common Street, two-way traffic, placed on the agenda by Councilor Maldonado, going to the ordinance committee. 1016, city employees and outside employment, placed on the agenda by Councilor Maldonado, ordinance committee. Document 1116, authorization to spend municipal energy, technical assistance, grant on the amount of $12,500, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee.
I'm sorry, Mr., Mr. President, uh, 1016, where did you send it?
Uh, ordinance committee.
No, that, uh, it should be sent to the personnel committee?
Okay. Okay.
1016 Personnel?
Uh, 1016 Personnel Committee. Document 1216, authorization to spend, uh, community compact grant on the amount of $15,000 is going to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Document 1316 is a disposition of city property, 92 Oak Street, is going to the Housing Committee. Document 1416, appointment of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, Michelle Melancan, is going to the Personnel Subcommittee. Document 1516, appointment, second city attorney, is going down to the Personnel Subcommittee. Um, councilors, at this point, um, I'd like to inform of the subcommittee assignments for the current term, um, before I make the, you know, the, the announcements as to which subcommittees will be assigned to each council member, it is important to note that, um, it is not an easy decision. I, we only had approximately 24 hours to be able to gather all of the information, we were sworn in yesterday, I went around and asked, uh, which subcommittee everyone wanted to serve. I've tried to do it in a manner that everyone gets an opportunity to serve in one of the, the committees of their choices, particularly, um, before each of the subcommittees, I will have to be present for the first time to open the, the floor and allow a motion to be made for the appointment of a chairperson. Once that, uh, motion carries, uh, the chairperson will take over the rest of the meeting, uh, which, whenever that meeting happens. Uh, for the ordinance subcommittee, I have assigned Councilor Estela Reyes, Councilor Giovanni Rodriguez, Councilor Niaca Alvarez, and Councilor Modesto Maldonado. I will be submitting all of this information via email, so everyone also has access to it. For the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, I have assigned Councilor Dave Abdu, Councilor Brian Depeña, Councilor Mark Laplante, and myself, um, Kendris Vasquez. For the Personnel Subcommittee, the assignments are Councilor Sandy Almonte, Councilor Dave Abdu, Councilor Brian Depeña, um, myself, Councilor Kendris Vasquez. For the Housing Subcommittee, uh, the assignments are Councilor Mark Laplante, Councilor, uh, Brian Depeña, Councilor Estela Reyes, Councilor Giovanni Rodriguez. Uh, for the Public Safety Subcommittee, assignments are Councilor Sandy Almonte, uh, Councilor Estela Reyes, Councilor Modesto Maldonado, and Councilor Giovanni Rodriguez. That's, um, for Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Okay, um, councilors, if for any reasons, uh, you aren't unable to fulfill any of the committee assignments, I would appreciate if you could please, uh, you know, speak to me, uh, once the meeting's over, and we could make some adjustments if necessary.
Mr. President, I'm going to decline the, uh, the Public Safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, um-
Council President, I just wanted to know, I mean, I can ask you this question in private, there are some of our councilors that were assigned to three different committees and then discuss, some of us councilors that were assigned to just one.
Um, there were certain councilors that actually asked me, uh, to be able to serve in one particular committee for purposes of either health or any other reasons, um, and that was the reason why there were certain councilors that receive, uh, an additional Um, now, we have an opening for Public Safety, if anyone will wishes to serve in the Public Safety Subcommittee, uh, please feel free to-
No.
Okay?
I'm not gonna argue over-
Um, Councilor Brian Depeña currently serving in three subcommittees.
Okay.
Councilor Abdu, will you like to serve in the, uh, Public Safety Subcommittee?
Sure.
Okay, Councilor Dave Abdu. All right, um, we will be notifying, I'm sorry? I'm sure, uh, we do not have public participation at this moment, uh, but we will glad, gladly speak with you right after the meeting is over.
Okay, okay, because 1416 affects me personally.
Yeah, uh, 1415-
1416.
1416.
That's Personnel.
Yes. That, um, that has been referred to the Personnel Subcommittee, uh, there will be a discussion at the Subcommittee level, uh, and you are more than welcome to attend at that point, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What is the other one for Brian?
1416?
In Budget.
Yes, I will be, I will be submitting all of the information, uh, via email, uh, in order to ensure that all councilors have access to it.
Florence Development.
To prevent any confusion, okay?
That's Michelle Melan, you're gonna say when we're gonna be meeting?
For what?
So, meeting dates, uh, I asked the clerk whether or not meetings have been posted for, uh, the upcoming subcommittees, however, uh, nothing has been posted as of yet, so what will happen is that we will request posting, uh, we will talk tomorrow about it.
Me too.
And we will notify you, okay?
I, I, I have a, I have a comment to make, may I, may I please, Council President, through you?
Uh, what is the comment in reference to?
It's in com- it's in reference to our committees.
Committee assignments, sure.
Yes, thank you. I just feel that, um, I need to make this a, a, a point for the public to hear, that, um, myself, Councilor Maldonado, and, um, and Councilor Niaca Alvarez got one committee. We were assigned to one committee during this term, and I want a clarification as to why such, um, decisions were made, that my, our, us three would be, um, the three that get like one committee to serve on, when I've, for six years, I have diligently served on, on two different boards, and I believe that, um, with the, with everything that has happened, especially on housing, that the experience that I have after being on there, um, I, I would be also, um, a great asset to them, because there's ongoing projects at this moment that I have made motions for, and I am the force pushing some of these activities, that I would be a great asset there.
Definitely.
To have, to, to, to have taken me off of these, I feel, um, I, I feel that it was an unfair move. One, two, um, I feel that, um, these are some of, some of, some of these are, are my babies, and I wanna make sure that, to, to be able to have those carried out, but I do, I do take offense to, um, getting one committee, and I want it to be made that known, um, because all of us here, um, need to be on different committees to make different things happen, so, um, the appointment of one committee for, for a seasoned counselor and appointments of three committees for non-seasoned counselors, I think it's a little unfair, and I wanted the public to know that, thank you.
Uh, let me express my, Mr. President, so-
One second, please, um, I did receive a text message from Councilor Almonte, uh, last night, if I am not mistaken.
Yes.
So, when, in that text message, you requested to remain in, in those- So when, in that text message, you requested to remain in those Subcommittees.
On the committees that I have.
However, the way I arranged it, you did also request to be in Public Safety, if I am not mistaken. So you have been assigned...
My...
No, no.
Go ahead.
At this point, no. So thank you very much for the comment.
Well, can I finish my comment?
Thank you.
I asked for, I asked to be on the two Committees. No, I need to clarify. This is point of clarification. Point of clarification.
The floor goes to Counsel Madonado at this point.
Would you lend me your, please?
Yes, I do, I give it.
Thank you. Thank you for leading the way. My message went as such. Can I please be on the two Subcommittees that I have available? And if you do not have anybody for Public Safety, I would also like to be on that one. But I did ask for Personnel and Housing, which are the ones that I have served on for the past four and a half years.
Counsel president, I'm going to make a motion to recess. A two-minute recess, please.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against.
The ayes have it.
Against.
Roll call, please.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
No.
Counsel Modesto Madonado.
No.
Counsel Armonte.
No.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Depeña.
No.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel president.
Yes.
Five, four. Two-minute recess.
Can I please get a motion to get out of recess?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Counselors, once again, I'd like to read the order of the Committee assignments. Ordinance Subcommittee, Counselor Estela Reyes, Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez, Counselor Neokha Alvarez, Counselor Modesto Madonado. Budget and Finance Subcommittee, Counselor Dave Abdu, Counselor Brian Depeña, Counselor Mark LaPlante, and myself, Counselor Kendris Vasquez. Personnel Subcommittee, Counselor Sandy Armonte, Counselor Dave Abdu, Counselor Brian Depeña, myself, Kendris Vasquez. Housing, Counselor Mark LaPlante, Counselor Estela Reyes, Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez. One slight change, Counselor Neokha Alvarez will be replacing Counselor Brian Depeña. Public Safety Subcommittee, Counselor Sandy Armonte, Counselor Estela Reyes, Counselor Dave Abdu, Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez. Counselors, dates will be notified to you since publication was not made for any of the Subcommittee meetings.
Mr. President, I had requested to speak before we went into recess.
Okay. This is the Committee assignments as is. If you want, we could speak in...
No, that's fine, I'm still going to speak.
Okay. We could speak in private in matter.
No, 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 I would like to speak in public. I don't have any problem with doing that. I believe that leaving three counselors out from...
Counsel Madonado, I have not recognized you the floor at this moment.
Oh, I thought you did.
I thought you did.
Sorry.
I never said Counsel Madonado.
Oh, sorry.
So this is...
Power trip.
Are definitely the Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made. It's been properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I'm glad you all find this funny. This is a meeting, a government meeting, okay? This isn't a clown circus or show. So behave yourselves.
Counsel Armonte?
That word can be... That word, lady, not for nothing, no. I'm sick of the abuse from the corner, and whatever they just said, right back to you, okay, lady?
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
That's all I got to say to you, right back to you.
Yes.
Counsel Depeña.
Yes.
No, now you don't know.
Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Armonte.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Armonte.
No.
Counsel Madonado.
No.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
No.
Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Please adjourn.
That's a gift from Kendris, I think.
Huh?
A gift from Kendris.
Kendris, thank you.